To the Gostown Planning Board meeting of Thursday, January 13, 2011. First topic of discussion, we have a couple of action items. I need a vote on the minutes, comments on December 9th and December 16th. Members of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second on the 9th.
Motion by Phil, seconded by Jim. Any discussion, corrections, or whatever on the minutes of December 9th? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we look at December 16, 2010. That was a, where there was a discussion of the amendments to the zoning ordinance, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, and also some other discussion items that evening. Motion by Lowell, seconded by Phil. Any corrections, additions, omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I got it.
Am I going too fast?
No.
No, Jim abstained.
Oh, pardon. Everybody should have been emailed the board's schedule. I'm assuming that's as tentative as it gets in terms of dates for the year. We all know that not everybody makes all the meetings, and so therefore, let's just try to do our best in making sure we make this calendar. Are there any other dates on this, Brian, that we need to think about during the course of the next 12 months you're aware of?
No, not that I'm aware of. As Patty noted in her email, the dates at the very bottom for public hearings and things next year are not quite defined yet by the state, so those will probably end up changing at some point here in the future when we get those dates. But other than that, this should be good for now.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment relative to schedules?
Yes.
I'm really disappointed that tonight there are two very important public hearings happening on the same night. This hearing on relative zoning amendments and the Budget Committee's hearing tonight. Disappointed that there couldn't have been better coordination when it comes to scheduling these hearings to make sure that not only the people here, but other residents and citizens who are interested could attend each of those. Now, I don't know who schedules which first. I understand that it was supposed to be last night for the Budget Committee, and weather precluded that, but I'm disappointed that there wasn't more foresight given to scheduling these things so that people could attend both of them.
What time do they start?
Seven, same time as us. Now, I don't know who scheduled first and who came later, but I'm just a little disappointed in coordination.
I don't know who makes the dates, other than we make ours and I just want to be on record.
I'm disappointed that I spent three hours shoveling snow yesterday.
To get there last night.
Well, anyways, I appreciate the comment. I heard it from a couple of other people today also. Everybody that's here, I appreciate you coming this evening. We'll try to make it as short as possible. And if you want to go to the budget hearing, you can leave right from here and go. So I'm gonna try to keep this short as we can to facilitate that. Not that I'm going. I've got homework schedules tonight. This evening, we're, have our second hearing on the zoning amendments as proposed by the planning board and as submitted by petition. Brian, would you like to address Planning Board Zoning Ordinance Amendment Number One, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And I apologize for the technical difficulty on my computer here. Trying to get this up on the board, but it seems to be going back and forth from one way to the other, so I'll try one more time. If I can get it on the board at least, that might be better than nothing. While that's working, I'll, okay. All right. So the first one is regarding chickens and livestock. And basically, the proposed change to the zoning ordinance is to change the table of accessory uses in Section 3.12, providing for the allowance of raising and keeping livestock and raising and keeping of poultry as accessory uses to a principal residential use permitted by right in the Conservation Agricultural Districts and permitted by special exception in the R1 and R2 districts, and not permitted in all other districts of the town. And then, there's a table that sort of shows that. This is the existing uses, and that may be hard for some people in the audience to see, but this shows how the current ordinance allows for raising and keeping of livestock and poultry. It basically puts it under the agricultural use. This proposed table puts it as an accessory use to a principal residential use. So it basically gives more allowance for people to be able to have chickens and livestock on their properties. And then, these ta, this table shows the zoning districts in which it's allowed. And just for the people in the audience's information, that Row Number 10 is for keeping and raising and keeping of poultry. Row Number 10 allows for the Conservation and Agricultural Districts. They show a P, that means it's permitted. And for the R1 and R2 districts, that shows SE, that stands for special exception, so those would be allowed by special exception in those two districts. The rest of the districts show a dash line, that means it's not permitted in those districts. And then, Row Number 11 shows that it's for raising and keeping of livestock. The only two districts in that row that allow for that use is the agricultural and the conservation districts. All other districts prohibit raising and keeping of livestock. Then there's some proposed text changes to go along with that in the ordinance. Section 5.5, agricultural and horticultural operations. The two, the two things that we're looking to add or change is 5.51 is, states the raising and keeping of livestock and poultry shall be conducted in ordinance, in accordance, I'm sorry, with best management practices adopted by the Commissioner of Agriculture, Markets, and Food, and with federal and state laws, regulations, and rules. And then, 5.52 says the raising and keeping of livestock and poultry as an accessory use of a principal residential use is subject to the following conditions. A, the raising and keeping of livestock and poultry shall be clearly incidental and subordinate to the use of the lot for a principal residential use. And B, the raising and keeping of livestock and poultry shall be conducted by a resident of the premises. The recommendation from staff, we've been through this several times with the board and with the ZBA, is to approve the zoning ordinance amendment number one. Just, this language, just to point out, replaces the current Section 5.5 in the zoning ordinance. So, that's it.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the board, comments, suggestions, wording? Before I open it up to the general public?
I have a question.
Yes, Barbara.
That unfortunately, I did, I regret not raising before, but maybe I'm making an issue out of nothing. This is a text change, and I don't have the whole thing in front of me, Brian, so this would apply as to all of the zoning areas where, in which it is allowed, either permitted or by special exception? Is that correct?
Well, the text applies to where it's allowed, so...
Right. So if I am in the conservancy zone, and I rent a barn to someone who, where raising of livestock is permitted, does it, that would no longer be, is that incident and subordinate to the use of the lot for a principal residential use?
I guess if the barn were to be used for the chickens and livestock, then, you know, you would have to clearly make that argument that that's what the use is for. If it was a barn used for other purposes, then you would, you'd only have to make that argument. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I guess if I've got an agricultural lot, and let's say the house burns down, and I decide not to rebuild the house, because I have a house on another lot, but I still want to raise my livestock and poultry there, can I?
Well, agricultural activity, I don't think it is dependent on a principal use in an agricultural lot, but I mean, that can be the principal.
I just want to make sure we're not creating a problem by this language in those zones.
The way the table is, the way the table is, though, it's allowed as a, an accessory use in both of those. And I have to go back and look at the table if it's allowed as...
...an accessory use if you don't have the residence, because the residence is a primary use.
It's also a principal use.
I think it's also allowed as a principal use, so you wouldn't have to...
Says right on the chart here, it's allowed as a principal use in the conservancy zone.
No, it says that's a P is permitted, not principal, permitted.
This is, this is for the accessory uses.
But if you look under J, under...
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted, because I didn't have the whole thing in front of me, so it's just flat out permitted.
Right.
Yeah, see, this is the first, the existing table of uses.
Jim is getting my concern.
J, J shows agricultural, or J for agricultural, shows that the raising and keeping of livestock and poultry are both allowed uses in the Conservation Agricultural Districts. So whether you had the house burned down, or didn't even have a house on there at all, you could...
No, no. The issue here was, if all you do is farm, it's a principal use. We do not allow dual principal uses unless the ordinance permits it.
Okay.
So if you have a house and farm buildings, the question is, what's the principal use? And typically, unless it's a full-time farm, and then you get some argumental question, its primary use is residential, and your accessory use is agricultural, just like we raise chickens behind our farm, but we're not zoning enforcement officer. The issue you're raising is, so on a principal use, which hardly ever happens in Gostown, because we didn't, I don't know how many real farms we have left, we're talking about people who live there and also have livestock, that's the issue we're talking about. That's an accessory use. Those new standards apply. The example you're raising is, I have a house, and I let the kids next door raise chickens in my barn. It's an accessory use, but that condition B, if you go back to it, won't permit us to do that, because it has to be conducted by the resident of the principal use. So if you have a barn on your property where you live, under that proposal, you can't let somebody else use it for chickens or livestock, as proposed. That's the answer to your question.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But the owner still could.
Sure.
The owner still could, and if, the example that you brought up about the house burning down, and then the barn being the principal use on them, that would still be permitted based on the old table, because that's still in there. The new table allows it to at least have chickens as an accessory use to a house or some other thing.
But, but that condition, you can put that page back up, Brian, with the text. The 5.5.2 is, that's without regard to which zoning district it's in. So now, that applies not only to the special exception area, zone, districts, but the permitted districts. Because if you look at the way it's presented on the, in the table, it's a general condition now. So now, not only in the agricultural, in the conservancy district, but in R1 and R2 if it's permitted, the chicken raising has to meet all of those requirements. And if we didn't have 5.5.1 previously in our zoning, for a principal use, it now, so we're adding additional condition for all farming operations, irrespective of the district, and we're adding some conditions on how you do it, even in the agricultural and conservancy in 5.5.2.
And I don't know that that was the intent.
I'm not sure it was. I'm not saying these are bad things, but it's a change.
Any other members of the board have a comment, suggestion?
And that doesn't specifically apply to just chickens, because livestock...
Right.
So you could not technically lease out your barn to somebody else for their horses.
If I have a principal, my principal use is...
I think what we were talking about was trying to define and give some guidance on those residential lots where people were trying to do that. And I think I missed, when we were talking about this, that probably, principal residential use, what we were trying to define was in the R1 and where we're letting it go in now, as compared to conservancy and agricultural where it's permitted. I think that what we were talking about was the condition of in the residentially zoned areas, making sure it was incidental to a principal use of a business being conducted by a resident of the property.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Should we close the public hearing and then talk about this later?
No, well, I don't want to close it yet, but I'll take input from the public.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a sort of general discussion, but yeah.
Okay. Any members of the public wishing to speak in reference to zoning amendment? Any members of the board? Kevin, do you want to say anything?
No.
Any words of advice? We always could use some.
I understand the question being asked.
Okay. Hearing no input on this issue from the public, I will close the public hearing, and members of the board, what's the issue? Our pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, just one editorial comment. It should be the Department of Agriculture, Markets, and Food, not the Commissioner. It's the department who adopts the BMPs, not the Commissioner.
That's a non-substitute change.
Right, exactly.
Who should that be?
The Department of Agriculture, Markets, and Food. Damn. It's referred to.
Okay. And before moving on to another item, what would the board's pleasure be in terms of adding this to the approved zoning amendments and propose for a vote for the town, or some other action?
Take a motion to move it on to the ballot?
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Huh?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lowell.
What a question.
Any discussion? Yes.
A change to 5.52 to include in a residential zone would make it less restrictive.
It's not the standard, it's a substantial change.
I know, I was trying, is it a substantial change, given that it's only part?
It's not, not greater or less restrictive, it's, we're sort of stuck with this.
I always sort of look at substantive as a hill, you know, and if you're at the top, then that's substantive.
You're all gonna get chickens for Easter.
We're stuck with this, or we're not, basically.
I guess...
Yeah, I guess, just a common concern that I have is, I understand why this was brought forward, but as was pointed out in 5.52B, I think perhaps an unintended consequence, the purpose of this was because of the amount of requests for variances for the raising of chickens. And I just have the concern that that last sentence, that B portion, unintended consequence, may make people come in for variances to allow that. Because I know several people that do lease, that they rent their barns for other animals.
Jim?
We can talk about this later if you want, but in the past, this is not unusual. We find at the last minute, there's a, it's more than a technical correction, but we've said, if this is a net gain, and it's something we can clean up next year, and in the meantime, it's not going to do a lot of damage, we put them on the ballot, knowing we can come back and tweak it, because you always have tweaking. And if we're gonna reduce substantially the number of variance requests by approving this, and then make sure it gets changed next year, and we tell the zoning officer to look the other way when the forage club is renting my barn, you know, we can live with it for a year. And that, you can do that, and it's a real, well, this isn't the earth-shattering kind of zoning change, let's face it, it's tweaking around the edges.
Right, to help the process.
Yeah, so I, you know, it's not perfect, oh, well, that's not a reason not to do it, if it's not going to substantially impede the booming chicken business in Gostown.
Well, I mean, I'm inclined to take that position, because I think it's going to help the process rather than hurt it, but I think it needs to go on the list for next year, because hopefully, there won't be an issue with it this year, but that needs to be looked at next year.
Okay.
Because there are people who have other people doing it.
I'll call a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously to hand it to the ballot. Brian, item number two.
Okay. Okay, item number two is a zoning ordinance amendment to rezone map six, Lot 78-2, from agricultural to commercial. The request is for a property address 381 Gostown Back Road, also known as the EduCare property. Some history on the property, back in 1991, EduCare site plan got approved for that portion of the business. On October 3, 1995, they have a separate business allowed as a home occupation for a beauty salon. On October 19 of 2009, just recently, they sought a variance to expand their occupation, their home occupation, to allow up to four full-time employees or non-residents, where otherwise, one would have been allowed. And then, that variance was granted on November 17, 2009. So this, that brings us to now, which they're requesting that their property be zoned commercial, which sort of matches the uses on the property currently. This is the zoning map of the town. It shows the property as zoned agricultural. There's some adjacent industrial land to the south, and then on the, on the east is our neighboring town, city of Manchester, so, and this also borders along the Gostown Back Road, so, and as I already stated, their property is already used for commercial uses. The recommendation is to approve the zoning ordinance, to change the zoning on that. I'll turn the time back over to the chair.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the board, any upfront observations or comments? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak in reference to this application for a change in the zoning from agricultural to commercial on the tax map, Lot 6, Lot 78-2? Awful quiet out there.
Get the map up.
Sorry. Seeing none? Last chance?
Well, I guess I'd like to hear, this is a petitioned article, I'd like to hear from the petitioner as to the request.
Is somebody here representing the petitioner? I know there is. Why don't you come right up here and step right up and tell us what it, what this is all about, please?
Well, for many...
Have a name, please?
My name? Janice Thomas-Aubin. What would you like to know?
Well, why?
I mean, you're using it as commercial, so why, I mean, you are reality, using it as commercial property based on the use...
Since 1985, EduCare's been there. The salon has been there a little after that. The thing is, with many different, of course, on paper, it's, you know, we're sitting on agricultural, but technically, it's really, people see it, departments see it as commercial. I pay commercial insurance, I pay, we have to go by rules for commercial property and building, and why not make it commercial? If I, I have another home, and if I want to go to my other home later and retire there, I want to be able to do that, and not have to be there all the time. We don't have any plans in doing anything, other than keeping it the way it is. I always want to own it, and we love being there, so...
Members of the board, anybody have any other questions? Yep, we, we understand, but I would never live next to my wife's daycare. Absolutely not. So given that, members of the board, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
I do. What, if it were, or zoned commercial, what changes would you make to the use?
To the what?
To the, the current use.
Not, nothing at all. Different, different departments...
Talking about principal versus accessory.
Yeah. Different departments in town, like fire department and all that, want us to go by rules of commercial. Well, but we're not, so we really, we really should be.
You're stuck in a middle.
We're, we don't know which way to go.
But the other thing is, when you're trying to finance something, and they find out that you have a variance or a special exception, yes.
It's hard to get loans, because, because it's a commercial, they see it as commercial, bank sees it as a commercial, and we, you know, we're not.
Straightens out a few paperwork details.
Well, I have a different view, but we can discuss it.
Okay. Can I thank you, Janice? And anybody else wishing to speak? For or against? Comments?
I don't have for or against, I just kind of wonder, what are the unintended consequences? You know, I would, I don't know the area that well, except for just driving past it, but...
What is your name, ma'am?
Oh, Jen Foley.
Okay. And you live in Gostown?
Yeah.
Where?
I'm 17 Walls Road.
Okay, thank you.
Just in terms of, I mean, all I'm hearing is that at some point, she's going to want to sell it for commercial, which I would understand that, because my property, I'd probably be here asking the same thing, but I just don't know what that means for our town, so, but I'm not for or against, I'm just raising the question.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Right, is the public hearing still open, or are you going to close it?
Yes, I haven't closed it yet.
Okay.
You may bring up something that somebody would like to answer.
If you, I mean, the issue here is, the scenario, it's not an issue, is, somebody gets a variance for a use in an area that otherwise has a different use. This is an agricultural district on that side of the street, which allows certain uses, including that condo development. They get a variance for some use, it starts small, and over time, the, the use permitted by variance expands. And then, they want to change the zoning to match the use that they've created and gotten variances for. And we say it's used for a childcare center, what's the big problem? But if you rezone it to commercial, you then permit manufacturing, fabrication, no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong column, you, it's, yeah, yeah, manufacturing, fabrication... You, it's, yeah, yeah, manufacturing, fabrication, assembly, research and development facility, wholesale establishment, laboratories and testing, wood milling, a whole host of uses are now permitted. So when the owner moves and wants to sell the land for some higher and better use, it's now zoned commercial, so you've given up any restrictions you've imposed to make it an appropriate site for a child daycare center, which is granted by variance, and allowed, you know, general commercial. Now, if the whole neighborhood changes, that may be appropriate. Here, there is no change in the neighborhood, it's just on this property. So there's nothing that's about, you know, makes the zoning classification of this general area obsolete, it's just that this owner's use has evolved. And we see this frequently. And my concern is, you're allowing them to carve out a little piece that's on the side of the street that's otherwise agricultural, because they've expanded a use by variance over time. And the advantage of having uses allowed by variances is you have more control over what happens if it's not being, you know, consistent with the zoning in the area. Now, you could step back and say, because of the proximity of Manchester, we don't seem to care much anymore about them, they care about us, and the industrial across the street, maybe this shouldn't be zoned as agricultural. But that's a more compelling argument and a more, a harder analysis than just this property owner's business has developed to a point where, for their purposes, they'd like to be free of the variance constraints, but they chose to get those in this agricultural district when they developed the business. I'm not picking on this one business, because we see it frequently, but you have a zoning scheme in the town, do you allow a use of permitted by variance to change that zoning scheme? I don't think you should.
Okay. Members of the board, do you have any response to that, Janice?
I do. First of all, when they were talking about agricultural, I mean, industrial across the street, I was not for that at all, because I don't think that anybody, I, I really didn't like it, and I will, and I have no intentions of ever selling. I have seven grandchildren, they all go there, I want to be there, and my daughter is the one that runs the salon with me, and it's her, it's her, it's her life now, it's her life, and nothing's going to change, because she has a family, and it's just a family thing, and it's a family business. And no matter where I am, it's still going to be there, even if I'm five minutes down the road and at the other house.
Members of the board, have any question, other questions of the petitioner? Then I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Janice. Members of the board? We've had some discussion, any further discussion? Phil?
I make a motion that we recommend.
Phil has made a motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Carlos, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have a, I have a, and maybe I should have asked the applicant, but is there an issue with the back of that lot? Does anybody remember from the site plans in regards to what, is it all dry behind that lot? It is? All right. I'm a little surprised there wasn't public comment on this, because, and I understand Jim's point, I mean, it's just, if there was Gostown property on the other side of this line, we would be treating this as spot zoning, and we have in other cases where they've come forward with one lot in an area. You know, as I'm speaking, I'm not really sure where I go, because I think the industrial property across the street, when that site plan was before this board, or the latest site plan, you know, there was significant concerns raised about, from the abutters, including Mrs. Thomas Auburn, in regards to what that was going to do to her operation across the street, and there was much to do about the intersection that's there in regards to the approval of that site plan. So we sort of did, while it may not be developed, we sort of did do a plan that changed the character of that strip, definitely. And in regards to other uses of the property, my recollection is, is that access to that site, as it is now, is somewhat limited to the point where they have a second egress on that private road that was worked out by agreement in regards to coming in and coming out of that site. So the site had some restrictions in regards to any further development, just by nature of it, it was, I'm just commenting from my recollection of the site plan and the discussions that have gone on in the past.
That would mean if there was a change, it would be back to the board for review and approval as a commercial site. Yes, Jim?
Yes, but, and if an applicant comes in, say it's changing per owner sales, which eventually will happen, and somebody comes in to put in a motor vehicle repair service in towing, including body work facility, permitted by zoning, Supreme Court has said it's a permitted use, you have pretty, pretty restricted on our ability to say no, we can tweak it, but we can't restrict it, because there's a presumption that it's, it's an appropriate use, a location for any use that's a permitted use in that district. And they're going to point to the fact that you even changed the zoning to commercial, so it must be an affirmation by the town that all these uses are appropriate there. So we'll have Joe's Body Shop towing and used car sales there, which will create less traffic, so I don't think your traffic issues are any better or worse than the daycare. I, you know, let the board wrestle with it at that time.
Lowell, any comment?
Well, if it was completely surrounded by other agricultural, I would have a lot more, you know, concerns about it, but as pointed out, you know, the fact that it's Manchester on one side, industrial on another side, you know, I find it harder to object to it.
Steve?
I, I'm not in favor of, as Barbara put it, spot zoning here, I, I, I think that giving up the control is, is significant, and like Jim said, once it's commercial, you know, we're really restricted, and what else can be there, and anything that's permitted could come down the road, and although the applicant has no intention of selling today, I, I can't predict what might happen in the future.
Okay. Phil?
Well, I know we have a very low commercial ratio of commercial property to our other properties in town. The property is being used on a commercial purpose, I think it should be zoned, and I think it should be taxed as commercial property.
I'm sure it is being taxed as commercial property.
I think it should become part of it, so that it helps increase that ratio of more commercial property in Gostown, which we lack so much of. And I would also like to point out to the board that this board, a few years ago, took out the industrial use of the agricultural zone, which was allowed by special exception. And prior, as, when this property was daycare center, you could have an industrial use in the agricultural zone by special exception.
Carl?
I'm in favor of it, because of location.
Carlos?
I don't have a problem with it, for a lot of the reasons that our, been stated, there's industrial across the street, I think it's a good location, it's got infrastructure that provides access to it from the urbanized central location of Manchester, and I agree with what Phil says, I think we need to take advantage of those opportunities when they present themselves to generate additional tax revenue for the town of Gostown, that's what the people are asking for, and I think there's an opportunity here to accommodate that, without a whole lot of impact to their surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. Any further discussion? Barbara? Now, call, call the motion. Motion made by Phil, seconded by Lowell, is that it?
Carlos.
Carlos? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
All right, who's, who's voting?
Who's voting, Walter?
Because Tim left.
Any, me, ni, mi, ni mo.
I need to refuse myself, I think, to the next one, so.
Okay.
Just, just to throw that out.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Two nays, motion carries.
Three nays.
Three? Three, four, four to three, it's on the ballot.
As recommended by the planning.
It's always on the ballot.
As recommended by the planning board.
Just for the, our recommendation appears.
So our rec, our recommendation appears, four, three. Thank you. Brian, do business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is a site plan for twelve High Street, map thirty-eight lot one oh one. Currently, there's a single-family residence on the property, and the new owner of the property would like to change the use from single-family residential to a mixed-use building. The proposal is for the building to be split into three units, one unit for general office space, two units for residential dwelling units. The applicant has submitted a site plan, he's requesting waiver of engineered drawings on the site plan, for the parking only, I should have emphasized that on this PowerPoint, but I didn't. He's using a plan that was drawn for the subdivision of the, of the property previously. The Gostown Public Library bought that property that's been split off of this original parcel, and so he's, he's got a site plan that he's sort of already able to use in reference. He's hoping that the board will waive the requirement to draw a whole new site plan with engineered drawings in order to, just to get some parking spaces drawn on it. So what he's done is, he's gone on and pencil-drawn on this existing site plan where his proposed parking would be. This is a zoning map of the, of the parcel. The parcel is zoned village commercial, so that does allow for mixed-use buildings. It's also bordered by residential one zoning to the north.
Where's your little pointer tonight?
I left it up in my office, I'm sorry. So much things to think about for the six o'clock meeting that I just had to rush down here. Key considerations is office use is low-impact, would have low impact to adjacent residential uses. Parking requirements for all the uses together requires six spaces. Proposed parking does encroach into the easement areas that have been reserved for a two-way drive that would allow the library to eventually have some parking lot access and a driveway adjacent to his property. And I apologize, I didn't put the plan on my PowerPoint, but you have it in front of you. He does have an alternative plan, since he wasn't sure if the parking spaces that encroached into the easement area would be accepted by the board. That plan would be basically to have two spaces within the existing barn that's attached, one space in the existing barn that's detached, and three spaces to the north, where it currently says three spaces, just to the north of the existing building that's detached. Staff feels that the easement area should remain unencumbered by the parking stall, so staff would propose that the second alternative for parking be used. Property borders Route thirteen, so it's got high-traffic area for, you know, a higher intense type of use with more, with the offices and that kind of thing. And then also, the property borders the Gostown Public Library's parking lot there, temporary parking lot right now. The recommendation is that the board find that the plan has no regional impact, that the board grant a waiver for the engineered drawings on the parking, and do a public hearing, and accept the plan for review. Staff felt like there may be a few issues still to be worked out, and so we felt it appropriate to recommend continuation of the public hearing to February tenth, twenty-eleven, for action. I'll turn the time back over to the board.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the board, two things we have to do first would be regional impact and accept the site plan for review. The first one is probably easier than the second, because the applicant is utilizing a, a plan prepared by an engineer, modified, and I'm not sure that we can accept that.
We can't accept somebody's plan that's signed by somebody else for a different-
Signed by somebody else, I don't believe we can accept that.
For a different purpose, no. Either we waive a site plan, or we make them do one, but we can't take key notchstones without their permission. Just don't, don't know how you can do that.
I'm not sure that, that we can, we can certainly talk about the merits of what he's proposed, in your applicant's presentation, but no action.
It's not an acceptance issue, though, that's a, it's after we accept it.
Yeah, so, members of the board? Jim?
Well, yeah, I'm sympathetic here, not putting up burdens to businesses, but the proposal, as I understand it, is to have, well, business on one of the floors, and I don't, I don't, I'm not sure of the layout, but that could conceivably be a significant business activity, we don't know what it is, we don't know what the business is, we don't know what the traffic is, we don't know what the parking will be, based on the proposed business, because it's not really described, so I don't know how we can weigh the parking needs unless Brian's going to tell us that it's formula-driven, I'm not much force-facing, we need X spaces.
That's correct.
Okay. But then to, we can't, we can't use this plan, because it's essentially not our plan to use, and I don't think the applicants.
The, has the town done any improvements to that parking lot? I thought they had.
Oh, yeah.
In terms of, I thought I saw cars parked up there.
Yeah, it's just temporary.
It's a temporary solution for some additional parking spaces, but yes, there has been some improvement there for a few more parking spaces.
All right, so, I don't, I'm, from what I'm reading in the, in the review by staff, doesn't appear to be any objection to how the property would be proposed to be used, it would be whatever required improvements would be outside of the building, in terms of parking, I think seems to be the question. Can we give the, if we're looking for a site plan, can we give the applicant some direction in terms of the, the amount of detail that we're willing to accept on the plan versus, you know, this fully engineered with drainage calculations and all kinds of other things, and traffic studies or whatever? Carlos?
Yeah, I would agree, I, I don't believe you can use another professional's plan and just modify it to suit your needs without their consent. I agree that I don't think we need to go through the full-blown process of a new site plan, but we need to have modifications to this plan that are consistent with the original preparer of the plan, or with their consent, I should- or with their consent, I should say. I'm a little uncomfortable also with saying, "Well, we can't get them here because of the easements, so we'll put a couple in a barn, we'll put one in a garage, we'll do," you know, I mean, it's kind of like a shell game. And lot seems to be big enough to come forward with a formal site plan that shows parking spaces that are clear, designated, without some sort of nebulous way to come around to that number of spaces. I'm just not comfortable with that. Two in the barn, one in the garage. Nobody's going to park in the garage, nobody's going to park in the barn, they're going to park outside, probably, but I think we need some more detail to the site plan, too.
Okay. Carl Lee, or is he just? Oh, I guess, Barbara?
Um.
Oh, he had to recuse himself.
I'm a little uncomfortable with the in-the-barn, out-of-the-barn type of thing and just addressing the parking for the first floor because this building can be multi-use, and whether it's being used for something right now or would be used for everything, I think this takes away some parking that is getting used, and then it's saying, "Okay, all of these spaces are going to be used to meet the requirement for the, whatever floor it is on developing." So I think I would want to see some clear designated spaces that meet the requirement. Given that, I think, as pointed out, this lot shouldn't be that much of a constraint, and I am not prone to double-use spaces. I think that was done with the site plan for the gas station at the bottom of Mountain Road where the doughnut shop is, where the pump stations got counted as parking stations, and that's just, I mean, it's a completely different use, but I think it was a double-counting that I don't want to get into here with.
On page two of his application, the development review, he does, it is stated that there's a thousand-square-foot office, a seventeen-hundred-square-foot apartment, and a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot apartment. But it is delineated as how he's splitting that up.
Right, but I think what Brian was talking about as to formulas, that was, the parking formula you were looking to was as to the business, right? Is that what I'm assuming?
All three.
It'd have to be for total, all three.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure it meant for all three, all right.
There's no waiver request for parking considerations based upon timing and whatever.
Thank you.
So the ones that would go inside the garage could be for the residential uses, for example, and the ones that are outside could be used for the commercial, the office use. That's, I believe, where he's going with that, and you can.
Okay.
But just looking at this plan.
You couldn't use both at the same time.
No, but if you look at the.
No, but the requirement for the office, I believe, is only two spaces, so you, I think it's two per.
Okay, two per unit?
Unit.
All right, however, I just don't want to double count.
But the.
They're all included, and Brian's telling me the formula's for six, so that's fine.
I'm fine with that, but in terms of the existing building in the back, which is a garage, there's two spaces located in front of it by the looks of it. Technically, dimensionally, there's not enough room for a aisle drive between the landscaping and the end of a parking space there, so there's some geometry issues there with the parking.
Staff would recommend that those two spaces in front of the existing building be removed.
How about the, and also the ones that extend into the easement?
Yes, so the three that would remain would be the three to the north of the existing detached building.
So where does everybody else park?
Inside. So two would be in the existing, inside the existing barn, and one would be inside the existing building.
Do those, do those garage doors and spaces exist now?
I believe they do, but you can ask the applicant.
Are we, we're getting.
No, we're talking, no, we're not in any public hearing, we're just discussing the issues.
Yeah, so, okay, we're not, this is just an acceptance hearing, so.
Correct. But we can, we first have to have some motions before we can discuss it with the applicant.
I think what we're struggling with is what kind of plan do we need?
We need to look at.
Yeah. That doesn't mean we can't talk to him.
Oh, sure, happy to talk, I just want to see where we're going with this discussion, what's really to define the plan, is what I'm saying.
Correct. So, going back to that, I'd like to get a motion on the floor about the regional impact. Let's take care of one at a time.
I'll make a motion that this plan has no regional impact.
Lowell made a motion, seconded by Phil, that there is no regional impact on this project. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so now let's talk about accept the site plan for review. What's the board's pleasure? Jim?
Well, I'm just noticing that staff comments on the key considerations with, it's not just the location of the parking spaces, but it addresses aisle width and turnarounds and other stuff that are dimensional and need to be shown on something to verify it being built. I don't know how you'd do that without a plan, so it seemed to me that, now, they're not making exterior changes and not certain that we have a drainage issue or other similar issues that we have to address, but it seems to me at a minimum you would need that shown on engineered drawings so that you could have something that were approved.
Can we, can we accept the application for review? So that we can hear from the applicant and maybe lead him forward in some direction.
I don't care, we can make it subject to not waive the requirement of a site plan.
Without waiving this requirement for a site plan.
And we can find out from the applicant what he's going to do and then make some determination of what we're going to require.
I would think we may want to make a motion to accept the application for review with, reserve the right for site plan comments?
Yeah, without wa, without waiving the requirement for.
Without waiving the requirement of a site plan.
Yeah, waive it for purposes of acceptance only.
Okay. So somebody want to make a motion here on the floor?
I'll make that motion, that we waive the engineered drawings for the purposes of acceptance only and accept the plan as complete otherwise.
Seconded by Phil. Motion by Lowell, seconded by Phil. Any discussion?
Did you say accept the plan as complete, or the application?
Or accept for.
The application.
Application, okay.
For acceptance only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one nay, motion carries. Is there somebody here representing the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Go forward, sir, have a seat.
My name is Steve Seltzer, good evening, and I am the applicant, so I guess I'm representing myself. And in doing so, I think I have probably grossly overcomplicated the situation by providing you with this beautifully-engineered drawing that I inherited when I purchased the property. What little I know about the history of the property was originally to use the beautiful Victorian house as a commercial enterprise with twenty-two parking spaces and a lot of blacktop. And with the addition of the blacktop from the library parking lot, one of my concerns was to try and preserve the character of the neighborhood, and in doing so was using, you know, what little I know about the formulas and the zoning guidelines about how many parking spaces are required for a mixed-use kind of business, which is a, is kind of a small, overgrown home business that I have, and to provide the parking spaces. So wasn't my intention to have a shell game to kind of move the parking spaces around. It was really out of, more out of ignorance about how to present it. The garages are there, the parking spaces are there, and my understanding was that you can't piggyback them and have a car in the garage with a car behind it and then count that as two spaces. So I basically left that kind of as a loose end. But one of my big concerns is to really preserve the character of the area with the beautiful architecture of the library, the beautiful architecture of the house. About the only traffic the business sees is the UPS driver every day, and we have no need for signage, for example. So the house will look as it does today, the surrounding landscaping will pretty much look as it does today. And my understanding was I needed to find six parking spaces to meet the requirement, and there's plenty of land there, and the intention was to put it, you know, in the back of the house where it really wasn't visible at all from the street. So if I can clarify anything or answer questions, I'm happy to do that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can, Phil.
Thank you. On your type of business, you say that the only thing that we would see is a UPS truck that comes in. These vehicles that you need parking spaces for, do they come in and out? Or do you have other vehicles that will be coming in that need parking spaces? I guess I'm trying to adjust the amount of traffic.
Yeah, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, but I invented a product that's used by dentists to put light on the mouth that doesn't go in people's eyes with a TV that you can watch, so that if you were a dental patient, you could go as far away as you possibly could while you were getting your teeth worked on. So we basically sell this by mail order all over the country. We probably have two employees, maybe three full-time equivalent employees, but I'd say we'll see a customer visit our office once or twice a year. So very, very little traffic. You know, I think if you were to, you know, watch what goes on during the course of a day, you'd almost think nobody was home. That's just how quiet it is.
So the parking would be used primarily by your employees, then?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's really nobody there who comes on a day-to-day basis. It's not like, you know, a law firm or a hair salon or a retail establishment where, you know, people are pulling up, doing something, leaving, you know, X number of cars per hour. They basically come to work during the day and leave at the end of the day.
Well, and for that, there's on-street parking actually there, on outside. I mean, not that it's part of our plan, but there is street parking available. I think the issue is, what is our plan?
It's the plan that we're going to want, yeah.
Carlos, you have a question of the applicant?
No, not at this point.
Phil?
Well, I guess we're kind of going with that, with this location and the area and the type of business. I mean, we did, we did have an application in front of us on the Methodist Church, or the prior Methodist Church down the street from this, not too far, a few blocks on the other side of Sully's. And I was just wondering, I mean, the thought process that I had is that we might be able to work with that because I, I think he's, the applicant is to be commended in keeping the pristine character of the, of the architecture and the, and the grounds for the neighborhood. I think if we could work with him some way in that, so that he can park the, meet the requirements or parking that he needs. And, you know, I mean, like everything else, if it becomes an issue down the road, we can always readdress it.
Steve?
I don't have any questions, I'm good.
Kim?
No, I don't have any other questions. I, you know, we're not, we're not talking about the merits of the proposal. I, yeah, I think it's something, I think it's a great idea, or maybe a great idea, it's just what do we need for our formal application?
Lowell?
Still, still not comfortable with something less than a plan.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think we need to, you know, be able to see, you know, on paper what it is that he's proposing as opposed, you know, and pencil lines aren't sufficient to really see.
Well, just taking a quick peek at it, I would think that, did you have, make any recommendations in terms of how the parking should appear, Brian?
The only recommendation that I can give you at this point is, you know, he's presented sort of two alternatives, and staff, I reviewed this with Megan, too, and she felt that, you know, the parking spaces that encroached into the easement areas were problematic, and so we were more in support of the alternative. Now, some, you know, one thing that hadn't been addressed yet is a handicap parking spot, which may be something to be required on there, and so that's something that we'll discuss with the applicant through the review process, but that's, as far as this is laid out, I mean, staff didn't have a problem with the three parking spaces in the rear of the house, so.
So what you're saying is they require six. There's three in the existing, underneath the existing house, there's one in the existing garage, so you need to find three more. Can't you get three more parallel to the easement between the garage and the house? My scale says yes. Why wouldn't you do that?
Directly behind.
Parallel to the.
Directly behind the house?
Directly behind the house, heading to the garage, you can take those three spaces, there's plenty of room for three spaces between the house and the garage, perpendicular to the easement. So you don't have to go behind the house, and it adds, it raises all the dimensional problems. Gives them six spaces.
That's an option I'm sure the applicant can consider.
That's the value of an engineer.
Yeah, and it's something that, you know, I'm more than happy to do. It's just a question of, you know, the degree of detail you're looking for, and I have to say I was a little bit frightened by not just this one sheet of the plan from Keach Nordstrom, but there were probably half a dozen sheets showing the twenty-two parking spaces and the blacktop and the drainage and the lights, and I looked at that and thought, "Well, this doesn't look like the house anymore," and wanted to keep it as simple as possible, but if you'd like a plan like that, I'm happy to provide it.
All right, Steve?
I guess my recommendation proposal would be, we'd like a plan that shows the parking layout based on, like I think the applicant represented, he's not making changes to the exterior of the house, except I assume some minor signage on the exterior doors that won't be visible from the street so people know not to go into somebody's apartment, but rather into the business, in that there'll be no change in exterior lighting or other issues that we have to review, and there's no change to the existing drainage, but for whatever minor change is caused by the parking. And on that note, we've had Megan sometimes give us a quick and dirty on whether it's going to create some issue, and we've sometimes said, "No, it's not," so we don't need anything further. I think we can arguably leave that to Megan or the DPW to do an assessment.
Megan, do you have any quick comments on this?
Well, I looked at Brian, and I mean, we pretty much said everything we talked about, which is, you know, approaching the easement and, you know, you mentioned the tight spacing with this current layout, so I think we talked about getting something different.
What would be your read on the handicap spot? If one would be required or not?
I think we had tried to ask Derek about that, if one was required or not, and we bring that up in our meeting.
Yeah, we didn't get a formal answer yet. We'll check with Derek and with the building inspector to make sure, see what the ADA requirements are, but.
And it's whatever ADA requires.
So as the applicant is recommending, you meet with staff and iron out some of the wrinkles.
Well, but I guess, you know, we need to give the applicant some direction on a plan. I mean, I think the idea is we want to see a plan for the applicant, not for the previous.
I'd like to, I'd like to also, at this point, it is scheduled, a notice is a public hearing. I'd like to open it to the public and see if there's some comments that might impact her recommendations to the applicant. I'm going to open it to public hearing, is there anybody wishing to speak in reference to this application? Yes, ma'am?
Jen Foley, I'm the chair of the library board trustees, and we didn't receive formal notice of this plan, so really, and we haven't had a regularly-scheduled library board meeting yet to reflect on this. So I can't speak on behalf of the board at all tonight, I'm only here to raise the concern that this application was noticed to the town because the town is obviously the property owner because the library cannot own land in its own name, but the land that, that is, that abuts was purchased by private money that was donated to the library for library use. And the library building itself, the deed, requires it to only be used for library uses, so I'm just here tonight to express concern that while that land is entitled the town's, that while that land is entitled the towns, it was not purchased with taxpayer money, and I was just concerned that we would not have received formal notice, and my understanding from, I had, the, the library director had some communications with, with Brian and with Patty this week, and that there is not an intention to do formal notice to the library. You know, of course, I'm here now and I have actual notice, but I'm not sure what kind of legal hoops, so I'm just, I'm just raising that, and I, I don't know yet how the, the board would feel about, we certainly share Mr. Seltzer's desire to keep it as less blacktop as possible, we also want to preserve the downtown feel, but beyond that, I, I can't speak to what we would, what we would say about where parking would be. We definitely, I'm, I, I would guess that we would not want the easement encroached on, because it is an egress easement, there's very specific language about what easement can be used for, but that's it, I'm just here to raise the notice issue tonight.
I can't answer that question. I don't know the answer. We'll find it out. Anybody else wishing to speak in reference to this application?
Hi.
Yes, ma'am?
Jennifer Phillips, we are abutters, we're right behind on Spring Street, and some of my questions have been answered, I'm very pleased to hear that it's not going to be a lot of in-and-out or a catch-and-parler or anything like that, that's good, and happy about the blacktop. We do, I think that there is already a gravel type of, of parking area that has been cleared and laid out that goes, you know, the headlights will be directly into our backyard, so we were curious as to how many cars would be there and how often there would be in-and-out. And of course, with the being Spring Street, we are concerned about drainage issues, so anytime you start putting down flat areas, blacktop, parking lot, it changes the water drainage, and we already have problems from the other side of the street with that property being when it floods, it comes into our basement, we just want to make sure that the water issues, I mean, address.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in reference to this application? Yes, sir?
Hi, Richard Bruno, I'm an abutter across the street at 11 High Street, and I'm here to just listen, I, I hear the input that the applicant has, and would like to hear more as far as what the board intends to do, I'm not sure what questions I can raise at this point, other than if I saw a site plan that had some actual dimensions on it, it would certainly be more comforting to me, and I'm sure the neighbors. I'd also question, I have seen some construction going on at the, at the building, exterior construction, so I'm not sure what, what's happening to the north of the building, but I think probably that should be documented in some sort of site plan, and also the business as well. It's come a long way since we were here a year or two ago, so this is a much better plan than what we had a couple of years ago, and I'm glad to hear that, that my new neighbor is keeping the character of the, the property in good shape. But I still think that we ought to see something in, on a formal plan, certainly don't need to have drainage and all of that, so I'm really not concerned at that, at this point, because I think that's been hashed over a number of times, I think these people on Spring Street may have a concern for that, and likes them to their, to their home, but I think it's best to properly lay it out in a formal plan, that would be my wish to the board, and thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Matt Wallace, I, I fluck to the north, and from what Mr. Seltzer's has kind of laid out in front of the planning board, I don't see any real issues at all. I, I think it sounds like a good plan, you know, I think he used the right language in terms of keeping, keeping with the character of the area, so I think it would be really a good, a good use for that building, you know, it's, it's low impact, sounds like we have conscientious owner, which is nice, so just from what I've heard this evening, it's, I have no problem with this.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Members of board, any questions of the applicant before I close the public hearing?
We're not, we're not closing the public hearing.
I'm not gonna close it, but that's okay. Jim?
It, it looks like on a seven point, two point seven, they do need one accessible parking space, if I'm reading this correctly, so the answer could be yes.
Okay, thank you.
You could provide that here.
Without closing the public hearing, what is the board's pleasure in terms of providing some information, direction to Mr. Seltzer? Carlos?
I don't want to impose an unnecessary burden on the applicant, but I think we need more detail in the site plan, exactly where the spaces are gonna be, how we're gonna buffer it from the surrounding neighborhood, you know, and again, not a whole lot of detail, but I think there needs to be more detail than we're seeing here, okay?
As an engineered plan or survey, as a surveyed, you want to assign plan, right?
I, I think we need that.
Barbara?
I mean, we've required it of other applicants, and again, I think it protects us and gives clear direction to the applicant.
Barbara?
I think we need a plan.
Okay, Phil?
Well, I think we need some type of plan, but I recall when the Methodist Church was in, or the prior Methodist Church, we didn't require a site plan.
Okay.
We just asked that they work with Megan and staff to address the usual.
Steve?
I, I'd like to see a plan.
Jim?
I would, but as to what it shows, other than parking and things that Carlos mentioned, unless, don't, responsibly on Megan, gratefully, unless she can, or Brian can identify drainage consequences a result of the change they're making, question whether we need to see that. And it seems to me that's a determination that they could make at the staff level, and then recommend to the applicant whether it's necessary, because otherwise, we're just looking at essentially a layout plan of improvements.
Okay. Lowell?
Yeah, I agree that the plan doesn't have to be real detail, but it doesn't need to be, you know, a real plan, okay?
Barbara?
I'd just like to say, there was the commercial lot in Pinardville, they came in first for landscaping, and we, they sort of came in with another plan that had been done and moving lines, and we said, you know, we like, we're okay with what you're saying, but we need a plan that shows us what you're doing, and it wasn't 22 sheets, and it wasn't, it was one page that said, this is where everything is, and, and that's what I'm thinking that we need for this, so.
What I think the board is saying is, you could take this one drawing, you could take it, have it updated by an engineer, probably the engineer that prepared this one, have him erase all the non-applicable information that's on this drawing, and change it so it reflects you as the owner, those kinds of things, and add six parking spaces to this plan, and be done. But meet with staff prior to, or have that engineer meet with staff to get their entire requirements. That's what I think they're saying.
And there's no problem doing that, this was designed to be a low-impact kind of presentation to minimize taking more of the, the green space and putting more parking spaces there, because if you look at how the blacktop has grown already, isn't a butter, you know, there are, you know, about 11 temporary blacktop spaces for the library, which thank goodness are there, because there was no parking for the library, but it wasn't my plan to make it a continuation of that all the way over onto the other property. But I can certainly do that, and I did get good advice from, from town staff, they did tell me when I drew in those three spaces to use a ruler, not to sketch it by hand, which I did do, and it, it's, there's not a problem clarifying this for you, but, and we can add more spaces, where you see those three drawn in, there can be more further to the left of it, but I didn't feel that the other property owners would appreciate seeing a lot of that greenery kind of brought down to, you know, blacktop or stone or whatever, but I have no problem providing that to the board, and I thank you for your input.
Thank you. Members of the board, the public hearing is open, but we need a motion to continue.
I guess we need a suggestion from the applicant when he wants to come back with his plan, so he can continue for that.
Well, I believe that Brian had February 11th, or the next meeting?
February 10th was the next meeting.
February 10th tonight.
Is that enough time for you, though, to get the plan drawn, have it, have it reviewed and everything by staff? Need additional time?
I have to write a check to Keach Nordstrom, they'll be happy to do anything to the plan if we pay for it, so, it's all okay, that's probably 10 minutes of work on their part, I, I don't see a problem with that.
Don't expect a bill for just 10 minutes.
Oh, I'm not.
So move to, we continue to, but, but we have to, that plan has to be in, in advance, so I don't, I didn't give them much time, because maybe, maybe you should do like the second February.
Maybe the 24th of February might be a better option.
Yeah, February 24th is another couple of weeks.
It's not like you're gonna be constructing these parking spaces in the 10th of February. The snow might have melted by then.
I'll move to the second meeting in February, then.
Yeah, I'm sure I can pay expedited fees to get it done.
But the snow still won't melt.
Is a motion to continue to February 24th?
Second.
Seconded by Carlos, motion by whom? Jim? Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Look forward to seeing you on the 24th, and please work this out.
We do that, spend enough time on the easy ones, enough time to spend on the hard ones.
Under new business, map nine lot four, four dash thirty-nine, maps six, lots seventy-three and sixty-nine A. A completeness review subdivision plan amendment, public hearing to amend approved plan to build less houses in phase two of Catamount Ridge Open Space Subdivision. Allstate Builders and Catamount Ridge LLC, East Dunbar Road and Monarch Avenue Zone Agricultural. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This project is a current project, it's half-built, the Catamount Ridge project has gone through its phase one part already, it's got two more phases to go, phase two and phase three, and they're requesting a phasing change at this time. What they're requesting is to split phase two into two, essentially two phases, so if you will, I'll call it a two A and a two B. Phase two A would have seven lots, and phase two, uh, two B would have five lots, the total phase two is 12 lots, so that, that's the whole phase. There are no waivers being requested, it's simple change on the phasing. This is essentially the area, and I drew, I picked that lot just because it was enough to show the area, but the phase in, in question is on this next page here, and the colors are sort of hard to make out, but phase two A is made up of lots forty, uh, four dash forty-seven through four dash fifty-one, and then also four dash seventy and four dash seventy-one on the other side of the street. Then two B would be the remainder of the lots that are in phase two, that'd be included, inclusive of lot four dash fifty-two, four dash fifty-three, and then four dash seventy-four through four, uh, I'm sorry, four dash seventy-two through seventy-four. So that's essentially the change, the changes requested. The applicant's come forward and asked this of the town in order to hopefully be able to fund the project, the phase, it's a little more difficult to phase, to fund more lots all at once than it is to, if you split it up into smaller portions, so that basically is the, the reason for the request, because it doesn't really present any negative impacts to the neighborhood, it's just building a few less lots than what they originally planned on. The board at a prior meeting in November, I believe, decided, though, that the applicant should come forward in a public hearing for this request, so, so that's what he's doing here tonight. Yes?
Maybe Mr. Busier can answer this, but is the road on both the other sides of that loop constructed, so what we're talking about is the connection, or what's, what's in and what's not? Maybe Mr. Busier can talk about it when we...
Currently, it, the road dead ends at that little black, blackened-in area right there, yep, and it does not extend at all to the, around the other side.
This is not existent.
That, okay.
Correct, correct.
So you're just continuing that road in two steps instead of one?
Correct, correct.
Continuing it here, and then these are the lots that would not be built on at this time.
Brian, did you say that Cistern wasn't built, it isn't?
The Cistern, the Cistern at the current dead end exists, and building to that next location would not require, I think, the, the next Cistern to be built, but, you know, once you get into the, the rest of those lots, it would have to be built, so it would be built in the phase two B of the, of the project. Mr. Busier is here to answer any questions as well, so...
So Brian, we, it's built to the hammerhead, I'm sorry, it's built to the hammerhead, then we build it around to the new hammerhead?
Yes.
And then build it from what, to, to there?
Yep, and he, he, the economy might change, he might build the whole thing.
Might.
Might. But if he, when he gets to this point, he may have to take and come back to us if he has to extend it just to here to another new hammerhead, and he'd probably at that time have to install the Cistern, probably, most likely.
So wouldn't you have to build that hammerhead as part of phase two B?
He's talking about building it right here.
That hammerhead right there, as part of phase two A.
Right, and what about two B?
Two B would have to have a, a hammerhead as well.
And why, why aren't we showing it at this point if they're requesting that as one of the phases?
Is that already shown on the prior phasing plan?
Uh, yeah, it was just, I mean...
A lousy planning book.
It's, it's my fault, I do the lines, so...
Also, the prior phasing showed one there, and it's just not being shown?
No, 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 it didn't show it, it just, that's just a, we're just showing in where the turnaround's...
Why don't we just...
If, if we were going to approve this, we could just say, condition that one phase two B is built, he comes in with a plan for the phase.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just wanted to make sure I understand what's going on.
Okay.
Some of those old planning members weren't very good.
We have to accept this application as complete, regional impact, please?
I move those things.
Do we have a second to that motion, please?
Second.
Someone speak up.
I'll second it.
Motion by, Jim seconded by Phil, that this application has no regional impact, is complete and ready for presentation. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll open a public hea, uh, the applicant, please come forward, tell us what it is you're up to.
I'm Scott, Allstate Builders, I own Catamount Ridge. They just come here to shorten the phase up because banks don't give me any money, so I do it out of my pocket.
Scott, Busier.
That's why I'm shortening the phases up, and the economy's really soft. It's pretty simple, really. You know, if Matt gave me all the money, I'd go get it, but they all, they, we're bad guys right now, we can't get any money from the banks for any development.
Okay, Jim?
Does the phasing change any of the drainage, stormwater control management on the...
How can you answer that? Well, where I stop is, is basically the peak of the hill, so it all runs back into existing drainage. I got the plan, if you want to see the profile, with the profile, wherever I stop the road right now, it all runs back into the existing drainage. If I go any further, then, then it starts down over the top of the hill, so that's where I pick that reason.
Carlos?
Is the issue, you get an alteration terrain permit from the state?
It's, it was renewed a long time ago.
Is it, is it current?
I, I want to say yes, but I don't want to bet my life on it.
We need to know that. We need to know that.
I mean, it's, two issues, one is permits, but two, just for our own purposes, exactly the point he's bringing up, is that a logical place that doesn't create a problem to the next?
I have the profiles. If you want to look at them, I've got them right here on the floor.
I think the underlying point is, are all the permits current?
That's, that's a sep- separate issue.
Right. But something I want to just raise for his.
So I think just in the drainage, we're gonna prove it on, on the, be subject to Megan's confirmation of what Mr. Busier just told us.
Okay. Any other members of board have a question? Mr. Busier? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in this application? Yes, ma'am?
I, I just had Kim Ricard report for Monarch Ave. I just had one thing. I didn't know if it was possible. I know when you go up the, the new part of Monarch and to the right, it looks like he tore through, like he's gonna down the road, put the road in for the loop. If he could, if possible, since it's been, the roads have been for construction and roads, they're getting ready to, to build roads and put the houses in, we've got increased summer traffic. The partying has been going up there quite a bit. So I didn't know, it looks like to the right that he, he may have attempted to start clearing, to put a road in there. If he's not gonna use that at the present time, put boulders or something there. Just to, just for us, we have increased traffic on a dead end street in the summer than we have right now. It's much quieter right now. But in the good Saturday night, you smell the smoke from fires in the woods and everything else and it feels so much more busy in the summer. So that, that would be helpful to, to us if they could just block it off if it's in access he's not cleaning and using for a while. Andy, the only other thing that I would ask to, if at all possible, even this fall, I noticed some landscaping businesses that do not belong in our neighborhood using that area as a place to put their stuff at the end of the day. And I did notice once Cooper paving coming at the end of the shift at 5:30. That's been an issue a few years ago. And it would just be greatly appreciated if that didn't happen either. So that was, and, and the only other question, because I don't know this answer, is how long is a subdivision, once it's been approved, can it go on? I mean, if it's approved, is it, can go for, you know, can you keep where it could get up? Is it five years, 10 years? How long? As long as it's active, is it, can it continue? I, that question I didn't know. I was just curious.
Thank you, Kim. Brian, can you answer that question at all? Because I don't, wouldn't, don't think members of the board would have an answer to that particular question.
I'll give my best shot at it. My understanding is that once a subdivision is approved and recorded, there is no time limit for development of any of the lots within that subdivision. It's obviously subject to the developer, you know, they will put forth bonds and things for the, for the rights of way and that kind of thing. As long as those are either extended or, you know, only subject to certain phase that they're within, then as long as they complete those portions of the development within that. As far as building a house on a lot, it could take 20 years before that house is built.
And this is subject to a phasing plan to begin with. I believe the project was phased initially. So it had a phasing plan, but I don't think there was any specific dates on that phasing plan either.
As long as the public improvements are done within the correct amount of time that, you know, that's been set forth and approved through the phasing, then that's, that's all that the town really is caring about.
Jim, you're looking in the book.
Well, it's, uh, it's issue six seventy-four thirty-nine on, on best thing. When did we approve this? I don't know. It's on the plan?
I've got just a portion of the plan. I don't have the whole plan. I'm sorry.
I think it was about 2002, maybe. 2000, 2002.
Your recommendation says all conditions from the approved subdivision of 2005.
Okay.
Gene?
It's a time limit on completion when we approved it.
That's when we started construction was June of '05. We, I had a pre-construction meeting record from when we started.
And there were four phases, so I'd assume it's at least four or five years out to begin with. I don't, I'm not too particularly concerned myself with where it stands at this particular point in time.
It's actually just three phases, I believe. And now we're looking to split phase two into two, so it would be, it would turn into four.
Member of the board, any questions to the applicant before we close the public hearing?
I, I guess if, is heard from the abutter of blocking off, I assume that's the other stub road. Is that an issue?
I don't think I can, Kim, right there?
I don't have a problem digging up a tree there. We, we just cleared it up to bring all, all the loomed stuff in from the first phase piled up out back there. That's no problem, drop a dead tree there. No, no branches, just a tree down so no one can drive in. But they party up at the end, way up there where it says phase two, there's a set of ledges up there, most beautiful place I've ever seen. It overlooks all of Manchester. You can walk up there. That's where the kids go partying. There, there was a, there was a four wheel path there. They were, they were long before I got there. Big parties, pardon me.
Scriptural needs, right?
I don't think, it's like, if you go there, it's really nice. They overlook the city. I see where they have fires. I can't stop them, but I'll try.
Carlos, the issue of landscaping and commercial businesses using it to store equipment, materials, are those people who are working on the lots?
Well, I don't know what the lady's talking about. I mean, this fall, I, I sold a house to a landscaper, which is Blue Point Landscaping. He trucked in a lot of fill for his lot. I don't know if she's talking about that. We had a problem with Cooper a couple of years ago. He was dumping stuff after hours. I don't think he dumped any this year, but he snuck a load in there. I'm not gonna say he doesn't. He didn't because I have a big pile. I know some people chucked some, some brush in in one day, stuck it around my, my dirt pile. I mean, I'm not there. It says no dumping. I, I can't, I'm not, I don't live there, so it's not.
No, it's okay. I mean, that's an enforcement issue. That can be dealt with separately. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't being used appropriately.
I don't give any permission to do it, but this fall, it was like 40 loads of fill brought up from the landscaping company, but he bought the house.
Yeah, he's developing a lot.
Yes. So I know a lot came in this fall. I'm not sure. That's what she's talking about.
Do you know question, other questions for the applicant? Close the public hearing? Members of the board?
I move that we approve the phasing as proposed, provided that the staff approves the location of the phasing to avoid drainage issues or that the applicant proposes suitable design for the turnaround at the end of phase two A and also at the end of phase two B. That, I think that can just be approved by the staff. We don't need to see.
About underlying permits?
Well, I asked her, as a condition of construction, he has to have all underlying permits.
So that doesn't need to be mentioned, okay?
I'll, I'll second it. What about blocking off? I don't know.
Oh, and based, the applicant, based on his offer to block the stub road.
Okay, second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on the motion? Carl, you're voting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, guys. Girls too.
Under all business. Map three lot thirty-two A. Time extension request hearing, request more time to build the approved Goffstown Harvest Christian Church, Cody Avenue, Daniel Plummer Road, St. Anselm's Drive and Route 114 Zoned Industrial. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a time extension request back before you again. The last time it was before you, the board decided to vacate the decision to deny the project and to hold a public hearing on this date, so we, we have arrived at this date and we're holding, uh, we're going to have a public hearing to reconsider the decision that had been earlier made regarding the site plan. To date, the ZBA has not acted yet on the decision to rehear the variance requests. And they continued their action to February 1st, 2011. Recommendation from staff is that planning board action should not happen on this until a decision is made by the ZBA. Therefore, the recommendation would be to hold the public, public hearing or at least open it and then continue the time extension to the February 10th meeting or later, depending on what the board wishes to do to allow the ZBA more time to make their decision. And that's it.
Members of the board? We have a couple of business items. Numbers one and two under staff recommendations.
Mr. Chair, is this a continuation of a prior status so we don't need to make new findings? As regional impact and extension, because we just continued the hearing to this date and now we, I think we can make a.
Make a rationalization that the public hearing is still open?
It's already in front of us, yeah.
It's in front of us? Okay.
Because we.
I don't believe we ever opened a public hearing beforehand. I believe we had a discussion, there was no public hearing scheduled. We made the motion to continue to today. I believe it was a business item. Where we vacated our prior decision of November and withheld any further judgment until after ZBA had a chance to review the case at a rehearing and that we had added it to this night's agenda, hoping that the ZBA had finalized their decision and we could therefore act upon a site plan extension request. So without having the zoning board's action to grant or deny, or grant or deny with conditions or whatever the case might be, we're still in a, it's kind of a limbo stage as to what we can do in terms of do we continue this to a, a later meeting whereby allowing the zoning board of adjustment to finalize their decision, which appears to have occurred the first meeting in February?
That's correct.
And also realizing that whatever decision they make is subject to appeal because it's a new variance request submitted by the church. And I believe that's a 30-day process. Two things I'd like to, to do is, one is I'd like to hear from the applicant reference this subject. Not on the extension, but on the process. And what he would think the process should be. It allows his client to fulfill their rights, but also recognizes our procedures and how we should deal with these things. What's the board's pleasure?
We open it up for that purpose only to give us, then we can decide how to proceed. Because the choices range from deciding on the merits, which I don't think we're gonna do, but suppose we have that choice, to anytime you could reinstate the prior decision, but I don't think we're going to do that, but we could to continue it and I guess we. I suppose it, it is noticed as a public hearing, so it's not inappropriate to allow some comment on that.
And I will open up a public hearing and hear an applicant's presentation based on the facts of where we stand now, what the timeframe is for the future and what the applicant is would like to tell us. You're on the floor.
Michael Tierney for Goffstown Harvest Christian Church. I know you all probably recognize me from being here before on two previous occasions. I want to thank you for scheduling this public hearing. I believe that the public hearing was scheduled with the understanding that there'd be a determination from the zoning board prior to tonight's hearing. However, I would suggest that a determination from the zoning board is not necessary prior to the planning board making a determination, particularly in light of a recent legislative amendment by the New Hampshire Legislature. This is SB 328 that amended RSA 676 colon four to specifically provide that planning boards, when acting on site plan and subdivision applications, should not be denying consideration of a application until other governmental bodies' permits are received by the planning board. The planning board can, and the statute expressly allows the planning board to condition any approval of any decision on obtaining the approval from some other governmental body, such as in this case, the ZBA. In addition, in my letter in which I requested reconsideration, I let the planning board know about the effect of the statute called RALUPA, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. And there's a certain section of the RALUPA statute that gives a great amount of discretion to the planning board to craft the relief in order to alleviate the substantial burden on a church. And so that really gives the planning board a lot of leeway to determine how to go forward here. So if it wasn't for the 676 colon four, which expressly allows the planning board to consider something, conditioning it on obtaining approval from another board, RALUPA would allow the planning board to approve a time extension conditioned on obtaining relief from another board, in this case, the zoning board. The planning board obviously could also make the determination that the zoning ordinance, which we argue is unconstitutional and violation of RALUPA, is unconstitutional and violation of RALUPA. And the planning board could make an administrative determination in the first instance, or it could defer and send that determination straight over to the ZBA.
Do you have any, besides your presentation, any documentation to, that would help us better understand your presentation?
The only documentation is my letter, which I believe was dated November 22nd, 2010. It's set for four reasons why I felt that a time extension in this particular case was appropriate. If the board wants to ask any questions about it or wants me to explain that, I'd be glad to. But I just wanted to mention that November 22nd, 2010 letter did not include reference to the SB 328 amendment, which was only effective in July of 2010. It's rather recent amendment to RSA 676 colon four expressly allowing planning boards, expressly instructing planning boards that they cannot deny consideration of an application until some other body first gives an approval. The planning board needs to consider it, but it can condition such approval on obtaining zoning variance or a alteration of terrain permit or what have you.
Do you have a copy of that SPA with you? Did you provide a copy to staff?
I do not have a copy of the state statute with me, which is humorous considering I entered this meeting saying that I brought a bag of just about everything that I could possibly imagine. I didn't bring all the state statutes with me. But I would be glad to borrow somebody's statute book and point out that particular provision if anyone happens to have a statute book with them. I'm looking to Brian, hoping that perhaps he has.
Mine's upstairs.
Yours is upstairs.
It's your pointer.
And this was an amendment that was only adopted in July 2010.
I don't think we're going to have anything with it qualified.
Those were printed prior to July.
Perhaps the best that I could get is a smartphone with internet connection, but I apologize for that.
We're not going to go there.
I understand.
What's the reference to it again?
It is SB three two eight, which amended six seventy-six colon four.
Mr. Chair, I'm sort of... I'm reluctant to be the third person to speak on this and make it three lawyers in a row because no one will understand a thing after three lawyers speak on a topic. But...
Steve and I haven't spoken yet.
You've mentioned something and then he spoke. Steve's next. Because what I thought I just heard was a statement from the applicant that we need to consider this proposal tonight. And I'm a little confused, and I apologize because I didn't bring everything with me. Do we have the last plan that was approved before us for extension or not?
Not, I didn't, we didn't put it on the table.
Okay. Because even if I had it, I wouldn't be able to tell whether, I mean, I know there are all sorts of special statutory things as to whether or not anything might have changed that would have affected the extension request in regards to what we approved. I mean, that's sort of a different, that gets into the merits of the discussion and I think what we were opening this up for was sort of to figure out how we're going to proceed. I'm not sure how we would even go to a public hearing in merits of the discussion, given what we have.
Well, the statement from the attorney, though, was that the planning board has the right to act without the ZBA's decision, but I don't believe that it has to act without the ZBA's decision.
I think you just stated his first and last statement on the Senate bill. I think there was a slight change in his representation that it wasn't a basis for us to continue to not hear it. I believe it's what he said, which is the same thing as saying we have to act on it despite another board's lack of acting on it. And I apologize, I would need to see the statute because there are lots of administrative or other decisions that need to happen for plans that we make conditional approvals for all the time. But regardless, I think my point is I don't know that I've got what I need.
Any comment, Carlos? Well, I'm going to open it up to the public, just as a matter of courtesy, although I don't see anybody out there except for Andrew. Anybody wish to comment from the public, this application for extension of time? And no one is present from the public. I'm hesitant to close any public hearing. Recommendation of staff is to continue the reconsideration hearing to February tenth, which is after the next scheduled hearing of the zoning board of adjustment, whereby they can finalize their decision and with a caveat that they may add conditions to whatever they... Whatever decision they make.
And... Point of view, Mr. Chair, have you closed the public hearing as to this issue so that we can proceed to act on it? Or is the applicant representative still here? I don't know if he's still part of the discussion or are we...
He's still part of the discussion.
Okay.
Have not closed the public hearing.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I do have the language from the statute I referenced a little earlier, six seventy-six colon four, which says, and I quote, "That a planning board cannot deny consideration," quote, "solely because it is dependent upon the issuance of permits or approvals from other governmental bodies," semicolon. "However, the planning board may condition approval upon receipt of such permits or approvals," period.
The operative word is "may."
May condition, correct. It may cannot deny consideration. It may condition it on approval.
Solely is the other operative word.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
That doesn't leave out continuing it, though, correct? You just can't make a decision to deny based on that, but you can continue to wait for it. And that's sort of what the recommendation is. So, I mean, I don't know that that changes anything necessarily as long as the board doesn't make another decision to deny.
Correct. Without closing the public hearing and without jeopardizing anybody's rights, I would think it would be prudent to continue the reconsideration until after the ZBA acts on their variance request. So my understanding is, you correct me if I'm wrong, that it's a new variance. It's not a reinstatement of a variance, that your application is for a new variance.
Our application to the ZBA was both a appeal of the decision that that variance had expired, as well as an application for a new variance.
Can't have both.
Well, that's the ZBA's decision.
That's their decision.
Let's just take care of it.
That's asking for the apples and the apple pie to be made all at the same time.
Yes, with the same apples.
Something like that.
I move that we direct the chair to attend to the planning board's matters and leave the ZBA's matters to him.
I'll second the motion. Want to go around the room?
Mr. Chair, again, are you still in public session?
Yes.
Because we can just answer, we have no further questions for the applicant.
Correct.
Okay, that's all you're looking for now.
Yes.
Then you'll close and then we can discuss.
Oh, but if you close the public hearing, then you have no opportunity to continue the public hearing. Is that correct or do you...
Well, we can close it solely for purposes of this decision, but leave it open as to all of the matters. So we haven't closed the public hearing if we continue, it's just...
This public hearing was open for purposes of process and have it going forward.
Yeah, we can, you have to at some point say to the applicant, "Thanks, we're now going to talk about it and decide," usher him to the back. But till we've closed this public hearing, you can participate. So I just want to know when we're there.
I'll move to the back row whenever you want me to.
No, we have you with us.
Sit right there.
Just self, you know, you understand the procedure, but I just want to know where we are in the discussion.
I think we're probably at a point where we need to make some action as to the... Now moving it forward so that we wait until the variance is acted upon.
Mr. Chair, I'd request that we close the public hearing for this evening only as to this issue so the board can deliberate and act on the procedural issue of whether we go forward tonight or continue it and then base our further actions on what the result of that decision is. If we decide to go forward tonight, we can reopen the hearing tonight, or if we decide to continue, we can do that and then have the matter open for notice of public hearing on the continued date.
Can you shorten that motion just a little bit?
I can say it in Latin.
I'm not going to repeat it. But Jim has made a motion. Basic, and Phil has seconded with the just being that we will... Do not preclude the applicant from speaking and that we basically are continuing our decision-making process until a date certain?
That's one of the choices. I just want to close this portion of it.
The motion is to make that determination.
Yeah, yeah.
To close the public hearing so we can make that determination.
But only as to that issue, so we can reopen it later if you decide.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? I think I understand it.
It's just a procedural motion.
It's a procedural motion. Hearing now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would move that we continue this to February tenth for a few reasons. One, notwithstanding the statute, the, we're not denying consideration of this application. We're just continuing a hearing on it until after the tenth. And the reason for that is with the new variance request, we are uncertain what conditions the ZBA may put on that variance. And as we discovered, when this came before us before, well before the current representative was there, that created problems because the variance terms and the Z, and what was before us were inconsistent. To avoid that wastage of time and burden on the applicant as well as us, we should wait. Second, the applicant has not made a compelling showing that the additional very small amount of time during the non-building season poses a burden on the applicant. So it is prudent for us to conserve our time and resources to take them up later. So I move that we can, and that basically we continue this to February tenth for further consideration.
Second motion by Jim, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say that when we have that before us, I'd want to make sure that what we're voting to on at that point as to the plan, we are aware of that whether or not whatever comes to us as far as conditions or any changes in laws outside of our parameters and what their effect is on the plan that was approved by us that's being extended. In other words, I am not entirely, I do not know, because we're in the variance and I'd have no idea what's going on with the ZBA, whether the plan is the same or not. And I just want to make sure that whatever we're dealing with is a known entity.
Yeah, well, is there time for the staff to prepare that for us for February tenth?
Well, I don't know because normally with a time extension request, one of the questions we would ask would be, has there been anything that's occurred since the original approval of this plan that would require any modifications to it? And I don't, I was not here as part of the original approval. I don't know. And that's why I'm saying I want to know. And I know that because of the variance issue, that when it came to this board and went back a couple of times originally, only because I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time and was, just sort of knew what was going on, that there were changes that happened at the end, on this application, is my recollection.
Is a word of information to the applicant, do we... Is part of this process that we're telling him that we want certification from the engineer, that there's been no modifications to the plans required by modifications to regulations and rules and all that kind of stuff? We're not asking for that, are we?
Well, not at this point, but we may make it a condition when we bring it forward.
Okay.
It's premature now.
I'm just raising that as an issue now because, you know, people are concerned about time and...
Well, but if we're in the discussion period, this could unfold that this comes to force in February tenth and the ZBA has added conditions and that we have to have a time then to assess the plan that was approved previously in relation to those conditions and, and to any other changes that we would require in a normal course on any, any extension or renewal like the stone water management that always comes up.
I'm only raising that as an issue because we put, we had it on this date because we thought the ZBA was going to act by this date and they didn't. And there are other issues also, and I just want to come forward.
We're not waiving this.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So I guess the real question is, should it go back to a meeting after February tenth? The ZBA is meeting on...
First, or first?
I think it's nine days. It's up to staff.
It's the staff and the applicant. At that point, it would be, if there's been some stipulations or whatever.
But does that give staff time?
We would need to address those at that time with us.
Does that give staff time enough to package it and send it out to us so we get it in our packet for the February tenth meeting, which we get prior?
We'll do it that same week that they do the action, so it's doable.
Does ZBA meet on Wednesday night, right?
Tuesday night, I believe.
The Tuesday?
Yeah.
So you mail out packets when?
Friday night.
So that gives staff three days if there's...
Depends what comes out of their decision.
Three days to...
It could be very simple.
Yeah.
And at the time, if it was very complex and detailed, we would have to... At the meeting on the tenth, we may have to continue it again if that's the case. Right?
I think that's in the best interest of the applicant. Let's keep it moving forward. If we need to continue it again at the February meeting, then we take it up then and deal with it.
Well, I guess we can leave it to the applicant to request one or the other, but I don't want, we want to reopen it to see if the applicant would rather we go to the next meeting to give us time to have a package prepared for us if it requires more. Because otherwise, February tenth, we're not going to have meaningful information.
Right.
Let's assume that we will have meaningful information. There's a motion on the floor for the tenth. Leave it at that and we'll have to take it up again at that point in time if we have to.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So it's been continued until we have to the tenth. And the discussion, at that time, will be based upon whatever transpires with the ZBA.
What day is town meeting, delivery session?
Oh, my goodness, I don't know.
It's like Monday before.
Fourth.
Okay. I want to make sure we... It's like that first Monday of February, isn't it?
Yeah, but there's...
I thought it was on a different date.
We don't have to run that one, do we?
No, it is school, which is on the Saturday. But no, we've, we've in the past have said if school and town are on the same week, we don't have planning board because we're deep by Thursday.
Yeah.
And I don't want to do that again. It happened one year. So if that...
Oh. Let's assume it's not going to happen. Because if it's a, we already voted for the tenth.
Yeah, we could bring it back, but I think we're good because I think school board, which is the one I run, is on the Saturday, the fifth or something.
Well, we have another meeting this month.
Yeah.
So we can... Recognize it as...
Because you are having it on Saturday this year. And what day do you think it was?
I think it's, what, town or school?
That's a Saturday.
Saturday, February fifth is the school, and the town meeting is Monday, February seventh. I don't know what, is it a snow date? It does not. Yeah, I know, there's a snow date. I don't remember what it was. Tenth.
Probably Thursday night, I think it is.
You know, like tonight's snow date, that, I mean, that's statutorily, the dates for the public hearing is statutorily, that's what's right there.
Any other business to come before the board? Do adjourn? Motion by Carlos, seconded by Phil for adjourn. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.